I now call to order the new Coral City Council meeting, special meeting, Thursday, February 1st at 7:00 PM. Mrs. Berner.
Mayor Reynolds.
Here.
Mr. Leidy?
Here.
Mr. Lowery?
Here.
Mr. Cobb?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lindsay?
Here.
All present?
All right. Now, an invocation by Councilmember Erin Leidy.
It's power heads. Dear only Father, we thank you for the opportunity for us to be here tonight, Lord. God be asking, you look after this city, all the people in it. Lord, we ask you bless our first responders, our policemen, and God just guide this council to help everything we do glorify your name. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. We're going to say the pledge of allegiance as a flag at the front today.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So, I think we should wait for a new council before we push forward? Should we wait for our legal council before we push forward?
Would you want to call her maybe real quick?
Um, here she comes. Nope, not her.
If so, I'm going to scream.
We're going to wait for Mrs. Dinkler.
You know what, if you call, we got stopped with that. It doesn't matter what crime, I just saw that.
Do you want to call her?
We'll call her.
Originally? Yeah, she usually comes on different.
Okay, yeah, you might want to give her a call.
It's quiet. It's crazy. I hate when it gets quiet like that.
Yes.
Anyone know any good jokes?
No.
No, you're fine. No, no, that's what I thought happened. So, if you're also going to solve, or you're going to come all the way down, and you're still going to see a road closed on, you can actually go past that and make a sharp right and just do like a big U. You have a turner, you have a need, you just through the turn, you turn it all on the fourth.
This is not everyday corn.
She already tried that. I'm sure she, like, gets closed because she's a lawyer, just like, I'm not breaking the law.
Yeah. Well, they've got a few people. We were sitting there.
Low. They got low. That's what they said.
Yeah.
You're not listening. You were here when they said that. I'm like, you're not listening. That's what he said.
They've been watching him for a long time.
Right. You don't want to.
Yeah, they got your neighbor. Which one? What did they get?
No, I mean bust.
Oh, the bus? Yeah. Is he your immediate neighbor?
No.
Operation closed.
Seven months ago, too.
Yeah, but they ain't coming back. You think?
Oh, who's not coming back?
The kids. There's no way. The house is like...
I think bail was like three grand.
Yeah. There's lights over there, there's something wrong.
Your parents, your parents are back.
Yeah, because they rested them, too.
Now, where'd they live? Same house?
Yeah. Did you see the pictures inside of that place? The wall wide?
The what?
Pictures inside the house. Every wall is like written on, paint, marker. Yeah, I'm sure we'll be from life.
Yeah. Eric, thanks for that. Could be like Nick Clag in 2010, right? There's running for the Prime Minister David Cameron, he says, "Do you honestly agree with that? Disagree on anything?" And passing, like, I'm tired of this. And Mike picked it up for his running mate. Thank you.
When are you going to be at work?
Tomorrow? Yeah, I got to be at the Wilson Memorial at 7:30.
I got to be there at 6:00.
How long does it take you to get to the bay?
15, 20 minutes?
12.
Okay, so you drive faster.
Yeah, I was going to work today, and I was like, man, I had so much pressure behind me, I was like, it really hurts. And then it was gone. It was like, 30 seconds later, it's like, my nose bleed all.
Oh, nice.
Like, tap, I think I got a cut around. And I was like, I'm not going to work today. I'm driving all the way up there. 12:45.
You got the bump truck to it.
Yeah, we need to ask him about that.
Because she said that she would need to be here tonight?
No.
She recommended that she be here?
No, we need to take you down.
I know, but that's what her recommendation was. She's the attorney. I'm just going off of her recommendation.
I always know when my kids pick up my phone.
Do what?
I don't mind waiting for her. Better safe than sorry.
That's why we have her.
When she sends you emails, I make sure she wants to be there.
Come on, you work with kids.
I know, I know. It's a whole other...
Groundhog Day tomorrow.
I know, you got to watch it. Groundhog's Day.
Is it tomorrow?
Yeah.
It's tomorrow. How many more weeks later?
It's actually, it's 24 this year.
Kids act up.
This weather's stuff.
Perfectly.
It was warmer this morning, I think.
It was, much warmer.
I heard a car noise.
Should we all like stand up and like...
Oh, we should. Well, now, you should stand up, someone should look at you, and you should sit back down.
Yeah, I think more.
Well, it's all high on me, too. Where'd they go?
Lily's upset, she's upset.
That worried.
So, she goes to the bathroom.
It's quite all right, Ms. Dinkler, quite all right.
I remember Lily.
Not every night, there you have corn in the road.
What, 10,000 ton of it? So, we're going to move forward now. Action on the minutes, there are none. Communications, none tonight. See manager's board, we do not have that. And comments from members of the public. So, if anyone has anything to say, now is your time. All righty. All right. Committee reports, none tonight. Legislation, item number 10. Council nominations and appointments, if passed by a majority vote, vacancy, council, city council seat. So, we'll do it via with the mayor and vice mayor. We'll have open nominations, and people submit their nominations, and we'll vote on each individual, up or down. Correct?
If I may.
Yes, ma'am.
So, council may nominate as many nominees as council chooses. Then, it is council may vote yes for only one nominee. And then it will be from a... If a winner, so to speak, is nominated, it will have to be from a majority of all council members.
Which is four.
You only have one vacant seat, yes.
Well, I'm saying a majority is the fourth person, four people.
A majority is that four of you will have to vote yes for one nominee.
And we may vote for just one single person? Or, like, let's say, candidate A gets three votes, candidate A gets three votes, and then there's another candidate, and like, let's say, we compromise on somebody else. We could all, we could vote for as many people as we want, correct? Yeses.
No, you may each vote for one person.
On that nomination?
Yes.
Period. Okay. All right. Do I hear nominations?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lowery.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Becky Schreier to the UT City Council seat.
Becky McKenzie.
I'm sorry, Becky McKenzie. Sorry.
Second. All right. Any other nominations from the floor?
With the fact that the citizens voted 400-plus for Mr. Shammy, I would like to put his name in nominee.
All right, is there a second? All right. Any discussion on, oh, Miss Berner?
You said?
All right. Any discussion on any of the candidates that we have placed in nomination or any other nominations? Do I have a motion to close nominations?
So, no.
Do I have a second to close nominations? I think it was Mr. Cook closed. And then second one? All right.
Who's the second?
Mr. Cobb. Any comments, questions, or concerns on any of the nominations? All right, we'll go forward with the first nomination.
Just Becky McKenzie.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Lowery.
Which one are we starting with?
Becky.
Becky?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Mr. Cobb?
No.
Mr. Cook?
No.
Vice Mayor Lindsay?
No.
Mayor Reynolds?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Two.
Mr. Leidy, did you vote?
Mr. Leidy.
Oh, Mr. Leidy, I'm here, sorry.
Yes.
All right, so now that's...
3-3 is a...
Three.
Does the nomination fail, then?
Then, we have three nominations, right?
Do we have two nominations?
Two nominations. Yes, and then move on to the next one.
Okay. And this one is open vote, we can vote yes or no on this person as well?
You vote on all of your nominations.
All right.
Okay.
Any discussions on Mr. Shammy? All right. Mrs. Berner.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lindsay?
Yes.
Mayor Reynolds?
I really prefer to see Mrs. McKenzie on the council, because I think that'd be representative of the demographics of our city. And it really, I really don't like this idea, but I will vote yes for Mr. Shammy, because he does have the 400 votes, but I really wish that we had the votes for Ms. McKenzie.
Mr. Leidy?
No.
Mr. Lowery?
No.
Mr. Cobb?
Yes.
So, that's four to two for Mr. Shammy. What was the count? Four to two?
Well, we've done that before in the past.
They both voted, everyone voted.
Yeah, we voted for two people, for Mr. Lowery, Mr. Leidy. I voted.
You were voting, you voted yes for two candidates, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, which we've done in the past.
So, has everyone else up there voted for two candidates?
Yes.
They went through and voted yes or no to Becky, and then they went to yes or no to Mr. Shammy.
If you, if you, if you all vote, as I explained in the beginning...
I understand what she's saying.
You can't, you can't all vote yes and no. You can't vote separately for all candidates. Then you could have a majority for all three candidates. You could have a majority vote for all three candidates. You're only filling one seat.
That's how I took it. That's why they nominated Matt. But my question was with Mr. Leidy, we voted yes for Mr., in particular in this case, Mr. Leidy. Bill and I voted for Mr. Cobb when Mr. Leidy was appointed, and then turned around and voted for Mr. Leidy, and that wasn't a problem then.
I wasn't, I would have to go back and check the records to see if I was here. I don't recall, I don't recall being asked to give any legal advice to oversee the vote for the vacancy for Mr. Leidy.
Okay.
I know you asked me to be here to oversee this.
At your recommendation, yes.
You need, you need to have a majority for the candidate to fill the vacancy. So, as we work through this, and I'm going to ask you to start this process again, because it's been voided.
All right.
Listen, I would ask all councils to listen to these instructions. And I'm going to give you, just by way of example, am I speaking loud enough for everybody?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. If you all, and I'm just going to pick, let's just say candidate A, if 1, 2, 3, 4 voted yes for candidate A, and you two voted no, we would have a majority of council voting yes for candidate A.
All right.
Then if we had candidate B that you nominated, 1, 2, 3, 4 voted yes for candidate B, and 1, 2 voted no for candidate B, you would have a majority for candidate B. And then if 1, 2, 3, 4 voted yes for candidate C, and 1, 2 voted no for candidate C, you would have a majority for candidate C. You would have three candidates that are top of that. Okay?
All right.
So, your process is to select a candidate.
But one had three votes, one had four votes. So, but if we will redo it, but Mr. Lowery has a comment. Yes, sir.
Ms. Dinkler, I'm just trying to understand what you're saying. So, are you saying that we as council members can only vote, period, for like, for one candidate? Like, we, let's say, just for example, me and Erin vote for candidate A. On candidate B, we cannot vote at all on candidate B, whether it's yes or no? Is that true?
No, you would, you would have to vote no.
Okay, so, so if you give a yes vote to candidate A, on candidate B, you cannot give a yes vote to.
Correct.
Okay.
Re-see the process.
Okay.
I can have to select your candidate, and then if this process does not come out with a majority candidate, then if you, if council does not meet again before your 30 days are up, to try to come to some agreement, to come to a majority selection for a candidate through appointment and vote, then that your charter, or your, and your rules, then move to mayor appointment within seven days, after from the 31st day.
Okay. So, a yes vote per council member for one candidate only. Right? Gotcha.
All right. Do I have nominations from the floor?
Mr. Mayor.
Still Lowery.
I make a motion to...
I'm totally confused here.
So, you can only vote yes for one, for one thing?
So, how I voted yes for Mrs. McKenzie and...
Which we did. No doubt that's voting yes.
I voted for both, but all right.
Vote yes to both candidates, it's a voiding part of process.
Okay, so we re-vote?
We're going to re-nominate.
Re-nominate, okay.
I think it's going to be the same way last time with the nominations, but Mr. Lowery?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Becky McKenzie.
Second. All right, first nomination, second nomination, is there another?
I will make a motion for Mr. Shammy.
Second.
All right. Then we need a motion to close nominations?
I will.
Second. All right, nominations are now closed. It's confusing.
We will be voting on Mrs. McKenzie.
Any discussion first?
I agree, I think it's important that we get a woman's voice up here on council.
I think that is very important to have, but I do not want to make the appointment, which has not, never been done by a mayor. My research has never appointed a member when the, when the council does not have the majority, and the, or the almost majority here agrees with one candidate, so I will be voting for Mr. Shammy. But Becky, I really, really hope that you do run in two years. I think we really need your voice, I really do, and I'm sincere in that. I think that you will be a fantastic councilwoman when you win in two years.
And?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Lowery?
Yes, for Becky.
Yeah. Mr. Cobb?
No.
Mr. Cook?
No.
Vice Mayor Lindsay?
No.
Mayor Reynolds?
No.
Mr. Leidy?
Yes.
And that is 2 to 4. Now, we move on to Mr. Shammy.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Leidy?
No.
Mr. Lowery?
No.
Mr. Cobb?
Yes.
And that is a majority, 4 to 2.
Okay. All right, so now we move into the swearing-in of the new council member. That's new to you, Ms. Berner?
Okay.
Mr. Shammy, will you please come up?
Okay.
Yeah, you can come up here.
You got $5?
I do solemnly swear and affirm that I will support the Constitution...
And affirm that I support the Constitution.
...of the United States of America...
The United States of America.
...and the Constitution of the State of Ohio...
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
...and the Charter and ordinances...
And Charter and ordinances.
...of the City of Coraline, Ohio...
Of Coraline, Ohio.
...and that I will faithfully...
And I will faithfully...
Honestly...
Honestly.
...and impartially discharge...
And impartial discharge.
...the duties of my office...
The duties of my office.
...to the best of my abilities...
To the best of my abilities.
...so help me God.
So help me God.
Do they sign now?
They're, yes.
Yes? All right.
Let me just walk with her.
Yep.
We're going to other business now, which is our budget work session. We're not adjourned for this, we'll just go right into it. Correct? All right.
You want to other business?
You want other business work session? If you, so we're not actually ending the meeting?
Right. Yeah, I just have a quick thing. Ms. Dinkler, are you staying for the, you're not staying for the work session, are you?
She's sitting for a little bit, yes. We have to do a new format with this budget work session, so she's going to guide us through what this format would be.
Okay. Thank you.
We've been doing it all for...
Right.
Those are good.
You are welcome to stay throughout the rest of the evening for the work session, or your...
Really? Really?
All right, goodbye, everybody.
Oh, no, I didn't know this was an option.
Right. Can we leave?
I'm just making sure I'm not giving you that, because I need all the stuff I need.
Everybody left.
I don't blame them.
Tally sausage is made, right? Tally sausage gets made.
Right.
I want to see it.
Are we, are you taking five or something?
If you want to, well, why don't you situate, yeah?
Oh, okay.
As we go through this...
We've been appointed.
We've done...
We're going to...
Drink.
Okay. Sure. You have any issues on that? I've done one before, because I'm going to let one of these gentlemen.
Okay. You want to... Or, Chris? Are you ready, Mr. Bridge? Ms. Harris?
Before we get started here, Ms. Dinkler's going to let us know how we're going to run this. Normally before in the past, we just kind of had like a roundtable discussion, multiple conversations going on at once, but we now need to keep this of this meeting, so this is going to have to be in a way more organized manner. So, Ms. Dinkler, are you ready to discuss how we should do this?
My suggestion is during this section of the meeting, of course, as you know, since we're in the public session, you all can give your comments to the manager and to this finance director with regard to the budget, and that's what you've asked for this portion of the meeting to be. It's open discussion, and there aren't any action items, i.e. there isn't any legislation or formal action to be taken during this part of the meeting. So, you're not formally voting on anything, and anything that you ask, ask for are suggestions that you'd like to see worked up in a suggested budget, and it will be put forth then in council to formally review, to take action on in a, in a formal ordinance yet to come. So, that's important for everyone. There is no such thing as a work session. People call these things work sessions because you're working on something, but there are technically three kinds of meetings that public bodies can have. You can have, although lots of communities call things different things, and there's nothing illegal or wrong with that, you can have a regular scheduled meeting, you can have a special meeting, and then you can have a work session meeting. And all of those things go forth on what notice you have to give the public in order to call your meeting. So, that's, that's the guidance that I just wanted to give you for tonight's meeting. And the mayor can go ahead and run the meeting, and conversations with the manager and whatever the other department, but ultimately, you won't be taking any of your actions.
Thank you. Everyone follow through with that?
Nope.
All right. Mr. Bridge, would you like to start us off?
Basically, this is how I recommend doing it. This is your guys' budget, and you guys have page one, and you guys can discuss page one, and let us know what you guys want us to look at, and you guys can ask us the questions.
Different way of doing it now.
Yeah.
All righty. So, I guess let's go page by page.
Page one is your general fund revenue. If you really can't, you guys have us slash that, or I'd recommend, who knows what they are. How Ms. Harris does it is we underestimate our revenues to hopefully get more at the end of the year.
Yeah.
So, that's basically how we do revenues. And how we certify our revenues is we get legislation or verification back from the county authority, and says this is what we're going to do.
So, we should just jump to page two, because does anyone have any comments, questions, or concerns on the ending fund balances?
No.
All right, so, page two, where we'll start.
And this is general fund expense, and this has to do with city council.
Okay.
So, wages, those are set by ordinance. You guys get, depending on what position you are, you know what those are. The fringe benefits are things that we have to take out by law. So, really, what we can look at, if you guys do want to slash anything, is maybe some of your training, travel, transportation, office supplies, things like that. So, let council take it over from there.
Council, any suggestions, recommendations? I actually have something. I don't know how council feels about this, but in the past, we've never had training or traveling expenses. That's something always we've been, we've incurred ourselves. Do you think that we should limit that down?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Lindsay?
We have...
So really, what we can look at if you guys do want to slash anything is maybe some of your training, travel, transportation, office supplies, things like that. So let council take it over from there.
Council, any suggestions, recommendations? I actually have something. I don't know how council feels about this, but in the past, we've never had training or traveling expenses. That's something always we've incurred ourselves. Do you think that we should limit that down?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Lindsay?
We have had training and travel expenses. When we go to... I know when I was newly elected, I went to Columbus for three days for training. I think it was over a weekend, but I don't remember. There's been other training courses that council can go to. Some of them, Mr. Bridge, attends for the council members.
I would be all right with his...
Can you tell me what that is?
Yeah, Sub项Law Training, I am allowed to attend on your behalf. However, I've already approached two new council members about the conference that go down in Cincinnati. It's for newly elected officials, so I'll be asking Mr. Shammy about that as well. So in the past, you're right, Mr. Mayor, council's never really done anything. This administration, we kind of get to go do things because it helps out with our state law.
Okay.
Especially with the Sub项Law stuff. Historically though, $1,500 is... You guys haven't touched that, you know? And now, I mean, last year, it looks like we didn't get anything for you. Sixteen, I think, is the year that Mr. Lindsay and I went to the surf conference. Me and Ms. Harris in Columbus over a few workdays. It is probably room for cutting, although I would recommend probably going below $1,000.
Okay. Do you...
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bridge, this $1,500, does this include gas or fuel reimbursement for you?
No, I'm not at council. This is only for council.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, so however, so Mr. Lindsay, he drove...
Good question.
And I don't think you put in for it, but if you can, like if you drive to Columbus, you're allowed to put in for mileage.
Oh, gotcha, okay. I'm sorry, I was looking at the wrong...
No, you're fine.
Gotcha, thank you, thank you.
So would council feel maybe cutting that $500? I mean, I know nickel and diming, but penny savings, penny earned.
If we're going to start nickel and diming, I think this is a good place to start.
Alright, so do you think for $1,000?
I'm okay with $1,000.
Mr. Bridge, since you're the city manager and you think $1,000 is okay, as long as we're not going lower?
I mean, we could just limit to how many... I don't see you guys are going to come close to $1,000.
Okay, I'm fine with $1,000.
Alright, Mr. Shammy.
I'm good with that, man.
Alright.
Does that make a sense, sir?
It feels like it is. And then, I had to... So does council have any other questions on this?
What about the camcorder operations? Let's see if we brought that, about $3,000. Is there... There's a background there.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
The camcorder.
We put a little in there for leeway. We don't know how many special meetings we're going to have in a year, so we kind of like to have a little bit of cushion there. We get charged every time we set this up and they have to process the videos on YouTube and that's where all that comes out. And again, just because it's allocated for $4,000 doesn't mean you're going to get $4,000 spent.
Mr. Mayor?
But you can look at your history. That's why I would definitely look at your history. That's why I have them back, you know, in the clarity of 14, so you guys can see every year how much you want.
Do you think $3,000? Or just keep it?
I'd say just keep it. What's it going to hurt? You're not using it if we don't have it. That's just my opinion.
Okay. How does everyone else feel about the camcorder?
I would like to see it cut down to about $2,000, maybe $2,300. The highest one we had was 2139 in 2015.
Okay, so...
And the rest have been at 15 or below, or 15, 15 and below. So I think $2,000 would be enough for that.
I think we're already at more meetings this year than we have any time before.
Just that, while I have done some of the recordings, just set in clutch even first, that still, you know, the look is professional when it's not moving.
Yeah.
But there's been a few times that they have not been able to stand behind the camcorder and move it, so you can probably look at it, I think there were two meetings, where they did not attend and we didn't get $1,004 for those.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm going to let Mr. Lindsay finish.
I just wanted to see if the rest of council thought about lowering that to $2,000 or is there another figure? I think $4,000 is entirely too much of that, based on the history, based on the history.
I'll go last because I'm the mayor.
Just a question, so if we set it at $2,000 and we need three, we've got to come back and redo this, right?
One minute, $3,000.
That was the same as my question.
Yeah.
I'm fine with, me personally, I'm fine with leaving it there because you're not going to use it if we don't have it.
I think that, for a second, I do apologize. I think every single year we go up to $4,000 and you see what we end up spending. There's a benefit to having a little bit of cushion in there because like I stated, if you guys get close to that and we have to do more legislation, you're also increasing your legal costs because now our attorney has to review that ordinance that we reappropriate. I mean, probably two of those, appropriate appropriations and then do their expenditure. So there's a yang and yang to what you take away.
Yeah.
There truly is. But again, just because it's allocated, we're not going to spend that.
So out of compromise, you think $3,000, we haven't got close to that. Do you want to keep it at four? I mean...
I was thinking $3,000, actually. Three.
Three? And you think three's okay?
I think, yeah. I mean, look at the history of the...
Yeah. How do you guys feel about it? Three, you can think of compromising. Three?
You guys agree? I'm good with when these two are, yes. If you three are good with it.
$3,000 for this? Any other comments, questions, or concerns about page two? We'll go with page two. Onto page three. So, Mr. Bridge?
Yeah, this is the manager's expense. I had voiced my concern about having some staff being held. So basically, when we first did this budget, there was a full-time executive system in there. However, going through the last round that I did before I submitted this account, I did remove that position 100%. So again, there will be no help from directly north of the administrative staff. And that is because the general fund still sees that net difference due to the $150 transfer from the... to the water tower. And also we have a GHB coming out of there as well. So, and then also too, I guess it's not also too, but you know, with slashing that, we also reduce the fringe benefit. So that $60,000 is just a... It's 75% of my thing. I think moving forward with this budget, and this city has a source that has done that, you have managers here that are only paid out of the general fund, namely me and Colleen. And that is proposed to change in this budget. Myself and Colleen specifically should be paid out of just about every fund that you have because we manage to...
Spread the money around.
Yeah, so to add the general fund, actually, we took 25% of our funds, mine and salary, and this is Harris's salary, when we did put it into the police levy fund. Now, I fully expect that to be analyzed by council. I fully expect it to be removed, but we did it so you guys can see what the benefit is of splitting out your payment of your department heads. So right now, again, this wage is only 75% of it. You'll find another 45% of the police levy funds. We are able to put it that on fire levy fund and we can put it on any fund that is managed by the finance director myself. Again, the city has a source that has done it. So what that means is that your general fund picks up here. And again, the city has relied heavily on their general fund to pick up this slack. And moving forward, given that we should probably operate our budget the most physically something we can, I think we will have to start paying your manager and your finance director out of a plethora of different funds. But again, I did slash my help. This would be the third consecutive year that I did slash that, so the city would be able to have somewhat of a better balance in the general fund. Everything else is up to negotiations, so I'll leave up to you guys to go through those line items that they recommend.
Counsel? Mr. Lowery?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bridge, on your... Let's see, where we at here? Your travel, your training, travel, and transportation, $1,200. That's just, that's just for you?
That is, yes, sir.
Is that fuel? Is that a fuel allowance?
That, and if I were going to get reimbursement for fuel, that would be coming through there. And historically, I've never put in a lot of fuel reimbursement. This year, I do not get a reimbursement on my car. So ever since I became city manager, I've been putting where I'm currently on the vehicle and not charging the city to do so. Moving forward, you will see, I already have a blanket open for this year, probably about 80 miles into it. Since I don't get the car allowance, I will be putting in more gas reimbursements this year.
Okay, so the $1,200 is the max, I mean, if it was just for mileage?
No, I can do it out of training, travel, transportation, but I also have 300 in fuel down there, too.
Okay, is that enough?
I'll make it work.
Wow. Is that enough, not making it work? Is that enough?
Here's the thing, I know that you've brought, I know you've taught, we've all, I don't know if you've ever taught with them, but you're using your own personal car to drive to Columbus. I don't think it's right for you to do that and not get reimbursed for fuel at a minimum.
If you don't want to raise it, that's great.
I think that's completely fair.
Yeah, what would you recommend for that?
I don't think, right, I don't think we're doing anyone a disservice by reimbursing you for mileage.
Totally agree.
I would recommend you knock the office supplies down 25 bucks. You knock the operational supplies down 25 bucks. You knock the small tools down 100, you add 150 back on.
And then operational supplies, you said knock down 25?
I would knock down your office supplies. I'm close to using that. I've got a stack of pins and everything else, I can make that work.
Drop it to what?
Take it off, just take it down to 100.
Okay.
My operational supplies, I would put at 250.
250.
My small tools and minor equipment, I would drop 100, put it down to 400.
Question, Mr. Bridge?
Yes, sir.
On the small tools and minor equipment, exactly what is that? What does that entail in your office?
Find you a new mouse, like laptop. That's a tool. Find you a camera, a tool. Find you a ruler. You know, find you a voice recorder. You know, a voice recorder, I mean, that's small tools.
Okay.
Okay. You said knock that one down $100 to 400?
And then crank up the fuel to 5?
How much did we slash off the other ones? I'm trying to maintain...
100, 25.
Then take it to full up, fuel up to 450.
450, okay.
I'm just going to throw this out to council and see what they think. The, I know you do a lot of driving. We've had conversations about it. And I'm sure you and Mr. Lowery have had conversations about it. I would not be opposed to throw another 50 in there. I don't know if we can cut it someplace else in here or from another fund to transfer it to him, to give him an even $500 on that, for his fuel plus the $1,200. The $1,200 for travel, transportation, and training.
Well, then I would look at maintenance of equipment. And I would slash that if you're going to have more...
Slash out another 50?
I would slash that probably another 100 and still give you 50, that way you're coming up with $25, not in the general fund. Historically, I've never used a lot of maintenance of equipment. Past few years, I've just...
So you say take that one to 300?
Small tools and equipment?
No, it's the under contractual maintenance of equipment.
Oh, 450, 350?
Yeah, I might have missed one. We'll review when you're done.
This is what I got. We got 100 of office supplies.
And while we talk about that, Mrs. McKenzie, you raised your hand?
I mean, Chief, I did operational.
Becky, you raised your hand?
And then 400 of small tools.
And then maintenance of equipment.
Yeah, go ahead.
Maggie and Colleen, how many hours typically do you work each week?
Oh, Lord.
Oh, buddy.
Way more than 40.
So, and how long have you both been at council?
So many, we're taking that number.
Our administrator?
How long, Doc?
Over three years. So you all get a salary, you only get paid for 40 hours, but you're probably working like 50, 60 hours a week?
Some more than that.
Because you don't have an administrator?
I think, you want the honest truth?
Yes.
I think I'll be honest with you. When I get there during the day, it is constant interruption. I'm not saying that in negative thing. You know, it can be someone coming in, emails, phone, people coming in, asking questions. It could be a business owner, it could be a new resident, it could be a plethora of reasons. They're going to have a meeting with one of the council members. So a lot of times what happens is I have to take my work home.
Right.
And I go home and I send my, I mean, I send emails out at 12:30, 1:00, 2:00, 3:00 in the morning sometimes, you know? But again, I am naturally like a late person anyway, so...
But that doesn't mean that you should be working.
Right, but at the same time, too, I recognize that the city doesn't have the funds needed yet. And it is my own choice to do that.
Is it something that maybe we'll be able to work towards in the future?
I think in the future, yeah. I mean, I'd like to see us get past the next round of the fire levy. I'd like to see us get past the second round of the police levy. And then you kind of start adjusting that stuff.
And just, if I'm correct, we can't give you any more pay increase because you've hit the cap that the union sets you on, correct?
Yeah.
So he gets paid the most, but still, the most he can.
Yeah.
But still works like way more than he gets paid.
Yeah, it's really bad.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with you. I mean, I wish that that cap wasn't there so that we can give you a little bit more, but just wanted to make sure that was going to be... Mr. Hall?
I don't know if this is the most appropriate time to bring this up. Many of you have heard me talk about hiring a professional grant writer to have on your staff. Just my study that I've done in the Miami Valley, the amount of revenue that they've been giving, bringing in, and I don't retain their salary, but this is where we could potentially amend a lot of the cap and other things that could be cut. But, you know, is that something that potentially you could only bring revenue, but maybe bring you guys an assistant or something like that?
I mean, it's definitely something that's popped in my mind. If we're going to bring an assistant in, they're going to definitely be, you know, looking at that grant aspect of it, you know? Finding the right person to do the job, first off, and then second off, you've got to have the money. So you're looking for a specific skill set, someone who has that executive experience and then also that grant writer experience. You know, grants, there's a formula for writing these grants, you know? There truly is, you know? We go out, we truly do. Sometimes we go, sometimes we don't. We see a lot of our success with grants right here at the playground, to be honest with you. You know, we truly do. Steve, our fire chief, put in for grants, I a couple of years ago, put in for a grant to do some things with the sheriff's office and, you know? And you're answering this ultra competitors, but there is a need. You hit one or two, and you're right, they gave you their salary right off the bat. So it's crossed our mind, it's just finding that right person with the right skill set. First and foremost, I'm not going to put that much energy into it if I knew we're not going to do it because of the budget. Does that make sense?
Right, I don't know if that's something I could be adding into the budget.
Well, the budget right now is operating on a net difference in the general fund of $221,000. So I don't think this is the year to do that. Because once you do that, then you just make that negative balance even more.
Would be possible maybe this summer. I work in law. I have interns.
There's a good reason, I can make it quick. I don't have time for interns. Intern, I tried before and, you know, especially with some of the stuff we do, because sometimes they can't see, you know, it's a government entity, you know?
A non-scholar agreement?
You have to be, I can't let an intern sit there and read my emails that I have to turn a clock for the job.
Well, they're strictly regular.
You know, so it's something I'll look at, but what I learned from interns is you spend most of your time teaching them. We don't have the staff to do that. I'm not trying to sound negative, but it's the truth. You know, we don't have, like when I was a cleaning worker, we had someone come in and it was easy because I dealt with that. The city manager did do it, she was busy doing other things, you know? It's tough when you're already short-staffed to do it because you're really just retraining someone on how... We need someone in there hitting the ground for us, to be honest with you. But historically, I'm not, interns are not my favorite cup of tea.
Sure. Any other comments, questions, concerns on this page? So you're, oh, go ahead, yes.
One more, just realistically, and I know you're always trying to save monies and I appreciate that. So this is, fuel's bumped up to 500?
Yes, sir.
Realistically, and I know that changes from, you know, year to year, how far into the year will $500 get you?
I don't know because I've never put it into it before. We'll have to see. If it's getting close, we'll have to come back and just do legislation.
Please do.
Yeah, definitely. I think that's a very good point.
Yeah.
I mean, he was willing to cut other sections, you know, to make up for it, so I think that's really important.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No, thank you for your, sorry, I appreciate it.
If you get close to the $500, can you tap into the $1,200 or not? Or just straight with four?
No, we could take, we could take, because it's still training battle.
It would be, it would give you $1,700.
Yeah, right, exactly, you know? So we have two items to choose from, you know? So one gets low, you know? But I do, I do want to go to more conferences this year because they are, some of them, if you pick the right ones, are packed full of good information. You know, the ones they do every year, they're kind of competitive. You know, but there are some good ones out there and I have never went somewhere to where I'm going to get a foot down. That's just, I don't do that. Mainly because I want to go home at night because I have a dollar. But, you know, so I'm very responsible with my travels and what's, which ones I go to. Just historically, I've never put in reimbursement all that much. I have before, but not every single time.
Okay. Go ahead.
Are we still on the...
Yes, manager.
So do we take fuel up to 500?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Did we knock down maintenance of equipment?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
400?
Because you got maintenance equipment's at four, membership dues and publication, that kind of needs to be saved, same, awesome. Operational supplies at 100, I mean, office supplies 100, operational supplies 250, fuel 500, small tools 400. Is that where you're on?
That's what I have.
Yep.
Audience, is everyone okay with that? Yeah?
Now, I had a question on capital outlay, if you don't mind? $3,000, just was wondering.
$3,000 for new laptop and a new phone.
Well, I...
My phone I have now, Mr. Kitzfeldt can equate to this, has been a bear for the past seven months, maybe even close to eight.
Is it a flip phone?
No doubt. No doubt. Over the weekend, Mr. Reynolds called me twice, back to back, I didn't even get it to restart my phone, so it's on its last leg, I've kind of held off as long as I can with it. I would have had a phone earlier, but we can't get ahold of our Verizon government rep, unfortunately, as we go through. My laptop is getting old, it's still functional, but just in case something goes wrong with this year, I would like to have the funds in there. $3,000 is a little bit high for a laptop nowadays, but a phone, I gotta get the phone cost in there, and I definitely don't wanna have to go cheap on a laptop, I have to get one another year.
Oh, I was gonna say, you have HP?
Yeah, the one I have now, I spent, I think, $800. And it's been a very good issue.
Yeah, after we had met today about the, how the work session would work, and I saw your laptop and your phone, you had your little zigzag combination a few times, I think it's warranted to that 3,000.
I would be more open to go down a little bit on that, and that's up for council, this is negotiation, so I'd be comfortable with maybe 2,500, if council's okay with that? Keep it at 3.
Go ahead, Bill.
I think we need to keep it at 3. I've been in there and he's wanted to take a sweat chamber to his computer, and he wanted to throw his phone in the trash can, and I don't know for sure, but I'm sure you have seen what I've seen, and I think if he can get a laptop and a computer for 3 grand or less.
Well, I'm not buying a computer, I'm just a laptop.
Well, a laptop's not a man, not originally desktop, but a laptop. If you can get, yeah, it's still a computer, if you can get a laptop or a phone for 3,000 or less, hats off to you. Because one I looked at, 3,000 wouldn't touch it.
Give it an apple.
Well, let's go ahead and pass on that before we start changing our mind.
All right. So, next, are we good?
Good.
We got the miscellaneous down there, miscellaneous, it's just that catch-all, it's 100 bucks right now.
You never know.
I didn't use it last year, 16, I used 50, so what do you guys wanna do with that?
I think we could, that could be another 100 for fuel if that were to pop up and we were to start getting closer, you know?
Cool, thank you.
Perfect, through this phone.
Hey, real quick, Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I just wanted to thank the few citizens that did stay for this, even though it's boring.
John's why he leaves.
Never mind, I take it back. Good night, John.
All right.
Right.
Mr. Mayor, if we fast forward to page six and then come back.
Yeah, we come.
The wall director?
Oh, yes.
If we have anything to cut, we'll let that answer.
Might be some up front.
I wanna get that half home, so you can get home to your family.
Yep, most definitely, we're gonna skip to page six for the sake of this is Dean Klus' time.
Yes.
Okay, so historically, I think we allocated last year 60,000, so we just came underneath that. I did offer that a little bit this year because we have a lot going on, so I will leave it up for council if you have any questions for Ms. Dean Klus, she can answer some things, but since we are an open session, she might not be able to answer everything. So if council wants to have any discussion on raising that, or lowering it?
Council?
I'd say leave it alone.
I would too. What do you guys feel?
Bill, go ahead, sir, age before beauty.
Oh, listen to this.
Go ahead.
The only suggestion I would have on this, if we get close to using all of this, let us know before we are there, so if we need to bump it, we can. Because I know we have some litigation going on, we have new council members, we have, we have, we have lots of things happening, so I would hate to, you know, use up to 75,000, and then something happens and she said, well, am I gonna do it, because am I gonna get paid now? I don't think she would do that, I think she's more ethical than that, but I really would want that fund to run out, and on wood, maybe we don't even have to use all of it, it'd be nice if we could buy 25,000.
It would be fantastic.
I don't think it's gonna happen this year.
I only do what you ask me.
Mr. Lowry?
You don't have a coupon day or something?
Get a coupon day or something, play 25% off of services?
No, sir.
That was funny.
That was not funny, but, okay.
How about two for one?
Wait one second, wait one second.
How about we let Ms. Dean Klus continue on doing what she's doing, because she's very nice to the city when it comes to her invoice.
Okay.
We'll just, we'll just say thank you for that.
Serious question, I do have a serious question, okay? And I don't know if you want me to bring it up here, I will, or we can do it privately some other.
If you're having questions about it, I don't know, man.
Yeah, okay, um, sorry, I got teared up on her laughing, um. We talked about a project that I want you, is gonna involve an attorney looking into, and I know you've kind of tried to hold me off on this, I really will look forward to it, and you said that would probably shoot up attorney fees.
Oh, it will.
So, I think we heard you.
Annexation.
Oh, we were double this fee then.
Well, do nowhere, hang on, am I allowed to bring it up? Oh, yeah.
Fuck that for the wire.
Exactly.
Confirmed what I told you, we will have to get a special attorney for that, Ms. Dean Klus will have to work with that attorney as well.
So should we budget more then?
That's what I'm saying.
That's actually a really good question. Wait one second.
Because they, I mean, in my opinion, they've got our address, new crawl hall, support some water, sewer, you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
Can I make a recommendation?
I feel like you would have been on the phone, because I can't tip up this debate.
Oh, okay.
I think what we talked about is down the road, it could be this year, but it's not gonna be the next few months, so I'd say we just address that later on, and then if we need to come back and add more money to this, then that's when we address that.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Is that okay with you?
That's fine, I just, I mean.
It's still on my radar.
I still, I really wanna look into it this year.
Sure.
Seriously.
We talked about it earlier.
Yeah, today, like, he wanted to talk about how the meeting would run, and I was like, what about this piece of land here?
Right.
Yeah, anytime you say that word in public, it just gets, it's.
It's probably gonna shake.
Well, I'll be honest with you, we had a meeting a couple of years ago at Meadowview Roads, and I had just became city manager, and one of the township trustees had caught wind because I said, I think, long-term, the city's gonna wanna handle it, so I was just speaking long-term bulk of the city, and it turned out to be a very good ODOT meeting that day, and so the moment you say you're gonna start that, it's going to cause immediate.
Oh, I'm sure.
Immediate ripple effect.
But I think it's, I think it's the right move for us.
Yeah.
When is our charter review committee?
Anytime.
It's every five years.
It's every five years.
Every five years that we're due.
We haven't done it yet.
And I'm going to recommend that we appoint a charter review commission shortly.
Yes, sir.
There are quite a few things that were held over previous administrations that the citizens did not pass, that need to be passed. The charter has several points that need to be upgraded.
If they're so supportive of our town, they need to be in it.
So, yeah, it's every five, we're about.
Yeah, I mean, a couple hundred bucks or something.
13 was the last.
So it's gonna be due this year? Charter reviews, they are, how costly?
I haven't done one for you.
I know they'll put up a file.
Well, let's have to track it and then we'll take it from there. Because I think we got a good push-in on that legal thing, so like I said, pretty much down the road, we see it, we need forever, we can, we can readjust.
All right, so no increases, no, hopefully no decreases.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Have we ever sought pro bono work?
I'm sorry?
Have we ever sought pro bono?
Sought pro bono work?
Sought pro bono?
Let me, like, have an attorney.
The very rich firms may need one to stop on that.
Have we ever sought pro bono?
Yeah, pro bono work through the Dayton Awards, it's like, I think.
For someone to do pro bono work for the city?
Yes, man, just, like, maybe for a special product, like, for a property attorney, that maybe who I would want to do annexations.
Oh, I'm not aware of anyone that does pro bono work for local.
For cities?
No.
Cities are red trac.
Do you know?
I don't know, I know, I think there may be some interest if you, if you maybe just reach out to Dayton Bar Association and say, we're a small city with a very fixed income.
Yeah, I'm very, I'm, I'm very involved in the Dayton Bar Association.
You've never heard of that?
It's all I can assure you that turns you not your standard, but for local subdivisions. Yeah. But, so that's all.
Is it an ethical thing?
There's a, there is a high demand for pro bono work that goes unmet for people in need, you know, for people that, that fall in, in the gaps, that, that don't have enough money, that need.
Right, I was thinking, like, specialist attorney, if there is an example, maybe if you're property construction, you know, legal suits and buildings, I would think that would be the type of pro bono attorneys, you know, not a domestic attorney or a criminal attorney, you have something that is a little more.
All right.
Yeah, thank you for the suggestion.
Sure, all right. Are we good? All right, Ms. Dean Klus, I think we're good, with our paying, yes.
So are we going back?
Yeah, so we can go backwards, to the back.
To four.
Four. And I got five for it.
It's a wrap.
Yeah, I've been, I've been asking about it for a couple of years now, and he's like, oh, let's, let's wait.
All right, we will come back to page six.
Four, all right, finance. Ms. Harris?
Thank you.
Your financing wages, you're, you're looking at, Ms. Harris, who else is 100% out of age? Do we have that?
75% of me, 100% of our tax administrator, 100% of our finance clerk, and 100% of our cashier, so we have four and three quarters.
Out of wages.
In the wages, it's not just me.
Your tape's dropped.
Oh, it's gone. That thing's a little, right? Yes, it's gonna be.
She was like.
We got two forms of that. Okay. Your overtime wages, we need to keep those in there because one of the hourly ladies may be taking some time to close out the door, we have to pay them overtime for the union contract, and along goes with fringe benefits, so I'll leave it up to council if you discuss anything below, including training, travel, and transportation. I know historically, we haven't hit that $4,000, but the training, travel, and transportation actually go in line with the capital, please, if you could look at the capital improvements, you'll see a very high portion for this year. The finance department historically don't do big capital purchases, however, we are in need of what they call the, what is it?
Upgrade of our, of our finance. It is virtual margin.
Virtual margin, so basically, we want to upgrade our software to be to the VIP version of it. That's wanting to allow Ms. Harris to do things at a much quicker rate and do things more efficiently. That purchase is about $40,000. That is a much needed addition to the finance department, it will streamline a lot of things in there and hopefully free up things on her fleet, and also the other people that she helps out with accounts paper. We have been wanting to get this now for about two years, I think last year we took it out on our own, didn't we? You know, now the general fund is good to go, this isn't a long-term investment that you will need for your software, and that includes your tax software as well, and your water bill and software.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Lindsay.
So you can refer to the, where's the CIP?
Mr. Root, you said that software is about $40,000?
It's listed, it's listed in your CIP. It's actually $65,000, that includes maintenance, so it's, so you have to do that, and you have to sign a maintenance, a maintenance agreement with it as well. But also, please look out because we have to do a governance mandate, which is GSP 34, we also have to do what we call our fixed asset inventory, and this software has also helped out with that, because who was in my office today, Mr. Lindsay, you're in there, I talked about the fixed asset on the budget. The city has historically, similar to the water towers, for the past 30-plus years, didn't do anything with the water towers, well, the city has never once listed and maintained online there, or on a database sheet, and valued the infrastructure and the capital that we have, so that's your water lines, that's your street, that's your sewers, that's everything that we have, that's our capital assets. We get dinged every year on our state law, because we don't track our capital assets, and we don't value those capital assets, so this software will help us to do that, as well as some of the capital that we have in the planning department.
What kind of printer do you use?
This is a specialized printer, it's a dot printer for our water bills and our, that's for your jets and all that stuff, it's a printer that have the whole size. Again, we have historically not got one of those, and I think, Mr., who was in the other thing, I showed you guys that printer.
That was, that was back, it's been a month, yeah.
Okay, yeah, so that's the printer, and again, we have always put that on too, now it's working, but it could go to any point in time, and that is, we have to get that, if we don't get that, we're not gonna manage.
Is that it?
I'll go ahead.
I just said so.
I have one, two fast questions.
Sure, absolutely.
It's probably a necessity, if I just haven't worked, it's why, for medical insurance, we've increased from about 41,000 to 97, and I'm just asking why?
Sure.
If it's needed, then it's needed.
No, thank you for the observation, because actually, we had negotiated a cheaper rate than healthcare.
Right.
We did, we are, we are seeing a cheaper rate, however, what we did is that's part of the $190,000 payout per GHP.
That's what I was thinking.
So we took that up, instead of the general fund paying 100%, the water portion's gonna be their employee portion, so you see that increase, that's a portion of the, for the financial market. If I remember correctly, it equated to about $6,400 of employee, which are 17 employees.
For the debt recovery.
For the debt recovery. Now, hopefully, we get that back, and that's pretty much all I'm gonna say about that.
Okay, good. And my second question was, I'm guessing this is delinquent tax collection fees, but it's line 101, 1,400, 5, 3?
It is.
Okay, and is that, do we pay that to Cleveland, or just, we have it there?
This is our new in-house collection.
Okay.
That we were trying to get started last year when we contracted out to CCA.
Okay.
That leaves our tax administrator starting to collect for non-filers and non-payers, so we can collect that in-house, but we haven't been able to do it for years. That's an estimated, because we haven't gone through the motion yet.
Yeah, because I was like, I was just wondering, because there was 0, 0, and then there was $55, and so I was just wondering, but.
I'm pretty pointed out, because I didn't want to abbreviate anything on this, so I overlooked that one, so I will actually type it all out.
I was assuming that's what it was, so, any other comments, questions, or concerns? Mr. Lindsay?
The $2,000 on the door, you put tax fees, is that for, like, for her taking the court, or, and she would be at a small claims court then? So that would not involve the city attorney, correct?
In small.
We're gonna start with small claims, and then we'll progress, we'll get it, I'm sure this year, that's all we're intending on doing, is getting that started.
You'll be able to do a lot if you're doing it in small claims, because that's.
Well, they're about $50 a person.
$50 a piece, so unless you've got like, five, six hundred.
For the longest time, we didn't know it was violent, so I think we should keep that.
Now, the upside of this is, you see that expenditure coming out, but that 2,000 expenditure could very well turn into a revenue, you know, so there's a flip side to that as well, so.
Yeah, I think we should keep it. You all agree with that?
I have a question on the maintenance of equipment.
Okay.
If we're, is that to replace equipment or just to maintain what we have? I mean, I know it says maintenance.
Service contracts. Service, there's service contracts, we have a contract for maintenance. Ranks, they come in and they fix it, stuff like that, and also we have servers, server software.
Okay.
It's not like, right?
Okay, check maintenance.
That's why it's under contractual, so if anything you under contractual, that is probably, it's definitely a maintenance, it's probably an agreement to do so, because that agreement requires a contract to do it. Whereas if you go down to like miscellaneous or something like that, and you see a maintenance of equipment there, it's not there, but it's a war there, that's like, all right, hey, my mouse broke, let me go buy another one or something, and that's probably a generic explanation, but that's pretty much, if that makes sense.
All right, any other conference questions or concerns?
Yeah.
No, all right.
Moving on?
Moving on to page five.
Planning, planning department, you know, we keep Jim, he's our photo informant officer, right now I got $10,000 in there. We did, last year, have two photo reports of offices on, but it only worked out that we have one, so that goes with fringe benefits, we have to put that out there. contractual, training, travel, and transportation, Jim doesn't go to any things I do, however, on behalf of the planning department, I haven't went in the past couple of years, but Miami Valley Planning has only workshops, usually about 50, 60 bucks, I have historically went to that, I haven't went the past couple of years, I do wanna try to go to that this year, because it is a great networking event, and also see what other communities in our region are doing for their planning as an effort, so we do get a lot of free information from going there. So that's why the $75 is there, but that's also why historically I've not been used, because I haven't went in, well, probably since 2013. Communication services is for his portion of the cell phone bill, ATN is landline bill, maintenance of equipment is, you know, again, probably, well, a pretty terrible value.
Any questions, comments, concerns?
I always have concerns on capital outlay.
Capital outlay under planning, that is so we can get GIS software, and that goes along with the capital assets, because if we go and we say, we want handheld GPS, we also have to get the software that goes into your computer, and what we would do is we'd walk around and we have this handheld GPS, and we'd map our underground utilities, and then you take that data from the handheld and you put it into that GIS, and that's where you manipulate the data. I used to do a lot of work on GIS in grad school, it's been about five years, so I have a little bit of experience in that, I just hope these software versions have gotten pretty far out of it, that I have to retrain myself, but, again, this has been in there historically, but we've never ended up getting it. Now, however, we are seriously looking at our capital assets, because we are starting to get that deemed on our state policy for our track. I think we could skip page six, and then page seven.
I think we could skip page six and then page seven, because you know, it's leases, lease funds.
I just kept that in there for history.
Yeah. It's good, but yeah, I was like, okay. So we're on to page eight now.
Yeah. All right, the general fund expense for parks, out of wages and the parks, that would be a little bit of Howie and a little bit of Mr. Coleman. I can put it in there. With the final budget, I'm going to do some things different. I'm going to put what we call full-time equivalent. So when you see general fund expense out of parks, you're going to know exactly who's paid of that. So if we have 1.2 equivalent being paid out of it, plus we have 1.5 being paid out of it, so you guys know who's being paid.
It's a quarter of how.
That's it. So parks is just a quarter of Howie.
All right, use the rest.
Then we have the seasonal wage employees, so I'll let council discuss that.
Any comments, questions, or concerns?
I'm going to let somebody else talk.
Seasonal employees are extremely, extremely bad.
Wait one second. Mr. Leidy?
How much money are we saving using the seasonal wages as opposed to using full-time employees?
Well, full-time employees are going to require a whole benefit package. So you're looking at your wage plus your benefits, that's probably, depending on what they bring in, probably 75, 80 a year. Seasonal employees are your best thing for your buck. We have a lot of grass to cut. Scott, Becky's father, works for the city. He now is our seasonal grass cutter. He stays out at the cemetery. We have, we will be looking at, and I will talk Howie about this, we can hire a company of a contract coming here to, I have a feeling it's going to be on our way. The moment they see our cemetery, they're going to be like, we're going to charge you tripled because none of the headstones are lined up. It's very difficult to cut. We also maintain our parks, all of them. We also maintain our riderways, so there is a lot of grass cutting. And it's very beneficial to have these seasonal sit on those mowers all day opposed to the more specialized stat that can go out and do road repairs. We do repairs on our parks, we do repairs on, you know, wherever the case may be. Did we put a little extra money in this year?
Yes.
Well, we went...
Instead of having...
38,000, and that's...
Just bring it back to what it used to be.
Eighteen.
And that, the wages for seasonal employees for two CDL employees, and that's Laurel, McNabb, he's been with the city now for a couple of years, and that's also Scott, who's last year was his first year as seasonal employee. They are limited to the number of hours a year, and that's 1,500?
1,500, 1,600.
They are limited to 1,500, 1,600 a year for the union contract.
Is that in keeping them under the healthcare, what was the healthcare?
The individual mandate.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's gone.
And they're both CDL, both Class B CDL drivers, that's the issue there.
And we haven't gotten down. I know I'm the minority here, but I actually enjoy having nice things that look nice. And when I think about the parks, I think about the cemetery, that family over there, I wanted to look nice. And, you know, we can go through, we can try to find other things to get cut. I know 38 is quite, it's quite a big jump. I mean, were there things that we, that were still not getting done last year that calls for this kind of increase?
Well, if you look at your...
What's that range? He is 12 or 1250.
He's all employees.
What level rate? I think he's 12.
It's at 38.
So he's 12, each of those around the 10, 76.
I don't want to get rid of him.
15, 16 each.
Well, I mean, they're going to tell us now. We're over here talking, but...
Does it look for it?
It's a calculator.
What if it's warranted for the job?
At 1,576, at 1250 hours, times that by two people is $39,000.
That's two people?
They're allowed 1,576 hours. We paid 1250 hours.
Okay, so this is stuff that has to get done to help us keep in code. So we're either using one of our full-time employees and taking that job away or hiring this just to, you know, seasonal work.
You take away the season...
I'll send it to you. Mr. Lindsey.
I agree with Mr. Leidy that the cemetery in the past is, and I have nobody buried there. I may be someday, I don't know. The... I like to see it cleaned and mowed because when I go by there and I see weeds this high, it just looks, you know, from the road, it looks disgusting and nasty.
Sure.
And if we could get some type of, I hate to use the word guarantee, that that cemetery will look good or get mowed at least once every two weeks to keep it clean.
It's mowed every day, all week.
Pardon me?
It's mowed every day, all week. I take the whole...
So it's mowed every day, every week. So with this 38, 38,000, if we don't cut that, you're guaranteeing me as much as a guarantee means in Ohio.
I'm not guaranteeing anything. I don't know.
But the cemetery is going to look good for us, especially around like the Fourth of July, Memorial Day, you know, certain holidays.
A lot of us making sure that it was...
Exactly, exactly.
He's next to you.
So I'm...
So what you calculated, this covers two employees, two tips. And we, how many we have in the past, just one?
Sometimes we've had zero and usually with this one.
So we've never had two?
With this, no, this is the first time we've had two. This past year, the first time we've had two, since like 2001, 2002.
So Caleb didn't come back?
Caleb, Caleb's only in for summer, or just a couple of weeks. So we've been there for two months. Caleb comes out and cuts grass for a couple. He comes home from college and then cuts grass for a couple of months and then he goes back to college. He's not paid out of this, but he's out of it.
I think some of them have been expressed that departments are helping, but we're seasonal workers.
That's all right, no big deal. Long story short, I support this. If that's what gives you two part-time, or two seasonal workers that we're not paying extra money for healthcare and things of that nature, I mean, I mean, you already mentioned that. That cemetery is a monster to take care of alone. I mean, you guys, you guys are spread thin as it is. Your departments are, you're working on pools and cemeteries and trying to help with roads and leaves and so, I mean, I personally have no problem with it. It's a better bang for your buck in my opinion.
All right, Mr. Cobb, you have some comments?
Do we not have a cemetery crew out there?
Yeah, we got a cemetery crew.
Then why aren't they taking care of cemetery?
They are, all seasonal employees. We have Scott. I mean, Scott does it, he cuts the grass, but our street guys are responsible, our street department's responsible for the cemetery. We don't have like a cemetery person with a cemetery title in their name. Greg, our street superintendent hangs out a lot in cemetery because of required to go in there. You know, we got graves that have to be dug anytime, could be in the winter. I mean, anytime it's a funeral, it's Greg, we go down there and take care of that. We don't have a dedicated cemetery stand up. We don't have the funds for it.
So I mean, at one point, I was opposed to seasonal workers and I made hay about them, but I will capitulate and think these are the best thing for our buck.
I think it truly is.
Yeah.
I agree. And that seems to be the majority of the side, so I would side with you guys.
All right.
And then I had two questions. Any other questions, by the way? I don't want to jump the gun on anybody. Capital outlay, obviously, it's going to be a question on probably all of them because it doesn't say exactly what it is. And I know it's in our CIP, but the next question would be shelter house renovations.
Shelter house renovations are in your CIP for $15,000 and I have $25,000 over capital outlay that is strictly will be used for playgrounds.
The 15,000?
25.
Oh, okay.
This is where I want to do the inclusive playground. I pushed that push last year. We'll be working with the Parks and Rec Board that submitted some things that's under review for attorney, then you guys will get it as well. But I've had a long-term plan with our playground. I think I've been very responsible with the money that's been allocated to me. We can see it out there, a lot of that's been grant. So I will, I've already had contact with the same person that gave us these last two grants. We were 25 to ground running for 18 for grants.
So that 25, we would see a return on investment within the year potentially?
Hopefully, we get the grant writing and all that done before so we don't have an opening ceremony in December. It's just timing. But again, the playground equipment is expensive as it is. But once you get to inclusive playground equipment, it just, the price goes up a little bit. So I'm hoping we can use some of this money for some matching funds for that grant, you know? If we don't use it all, fantastic. The goal is to use as less as we can and get the most equipment out of it, you know? So that's just, we're mad with that.
Shelter house renovations?
That is a...
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned that.
I'm sorry, I can just, I'll let you go.
Oh, thanks. All right, real quick, I don't know if you've got, if you have this over there calling. I mean, I know just from speaking with you guys and the ladies at the city building, this place is rented almost nonstop. I mean, so what kind of, what kind of revenue does it generate per year, ballpark, if you have?
Well, the general fund, I've got it as a separate line item and I can tell you what we receiveded.
For what, I'm sorry?
Shelter house. So in 2017, we brought in 11,000, 848 dollars.
You said 9,000?
11,000.
11,000. And that's pretty much pure profit, right? I mean, as far as, I mean, you, no?
No, we got to pay some money. We, when we pay it to some cost, we paid it, we did, we paid it.
Right, right, but I'm...
We might have got to clean it afterwards, so.
Okay, there's a little cost, but I mean, I'm saying you're not, you're not rebuilding it every other month or something, you know? Okay, I don't know. I did a post on this a while back just to see what people thought. And I mean, a lot of people wanted to see something, because the one in Medway has a very small kitchen. And I know that we'd brought it up before and it kind of got shot down, which is fine. You know, I'd like to see new tables and chairs and I'd love to see something added on, just a small section right there with a base refrigerator and a microwave or something in a sink. That's just me.
Sure, throw another aspect.
Because it's going to make it more attractive and appealing. It's just going to make it that much harder for people to rent because it's going to be so, you know, everyone's going to be wanting to use it. And it's going to pay for itself.
Mr. Cook?
If we go with that...
Can I interject?
And it's just a suggestion.
Part of that $15,000 for the shelter house is not only to do the upgrades, but it's also to do some additions for this to make it a little more easier for council. I know Mr. Mayor, you talk about maybe getting curtains, something like that. You know, so that is totally, good luck with that, big guys. Have fun with that one. But that 15 covers the, that upgrade and then also if you guys want to do anything to make this more comfortable as a council chambers.
Okay, Mr. Cook?
Okay. I have no problem with if you want to add a kitchen, et cetera, et cetera. However, I think there should be some type of a security deposit. Somebody comes in and checks this place after they leave to make sure it is cleaned. We don't have spilled food in the kitchen area, the refrigerator, nobody burns a roast in the oven and walks off. You know, I have seen many cases when coming in here, when these tables are a mess. Yeah, we've got crayon marks all over this one as it is.
Right.
I would also like to see some type of sound equipment put in here so that the people in the back roads can hear what's going on. See, that's pretty much microphones.
Do these amplify or just record?
They're just microphones.
They just record. Our problem with having a studio system set up is the echo. You can't monitor yourself and have speakers that go back to each other, just the way the acoustics are currently set up. We'd have to get this carpeted or get it, that acoustic to...
Dampen it.
Go before you can do that.
Mr. Cook?
Okay, if that's the case, then what's it going to take to put soundboard?
I've got with Tecumseh's, this was quite a few years ago, with Tecumseh's porch, how they've done theirs. It's been a long time, but they were really expensive just to hang acoustical boards in to absorb sound. I can't remember, but they were really, really expensive. And I mean, hundreds into thousands of dollars for acoustical, it's not just hanging a carpet or a towel, but a sort of sound, they're actual made for, they're designed for that. And I can check back into that, but it would take a lot because this whole building is nothing but solid floor, wall, ceiling.
I think that's something that needs to be looked into and I think we definitely need. And again, I'm speaking from the fact that I'm hard of hearing, I've got hearing aids and it seems like most of the people that come out here are, I will say, senior citizens. So I think we need to improve the sound quality so it's taken here.
Do you think having it in a different space, like, would it make more sense for council meetings if we just had it in a different space so you wouldn't have to put so much money into making this space?
That's something to look at because the other flipside to that, and I totally understand where you're coming from with this, but we don't know how much longer we're going to be in. If we do anything with current city buildings, I briefly had a discussion with some of you about that, or we end up wherever, you know? If we're only here for a couple more years, I don't really feel it's justified to spend 15, 20,000 dollars to upgrade this. But you have to, the thing of it is, is we happen to be, and I agree with you, how do you do that physically responsible knowing, you know, we're all looking for a permanent home? And if we find a permanent home, council chambers will be moved. And I agree with you. Do we look for another spot to have council meetings? But then you ask yourself where?
You know, like in church, don't they have the, like, earphones that you then use to listen to church services? Is that hooked up to their microphone?
That's hooked up to their sound system and it uses like a lot of wiring, which we don't have the capability here.
Tell you what, if I can make a recommendation, let's just put, we're not, we'll go on the budget for a couple more weeks. So let's just leave this particular line on as is for right now. We can visit in the next, maybe week or two. How and I will work on some ideas and present the best what we can. Without knowing what the facts are right now, we can have a 15-minute discussion, not knowing how much things are going to cost. Does that make sense?
I'm picking this up.
Does anyone have any experience in sound? You, you seriously, like, what can we do to improve the acoustics in here on down?
In here?
Yes.
It would take a lot.
Yeah.
Okay. We have to.
It's just so open.
That's a lot of that. If you have some recording, just kind of that.
Okay.
Okay. To go off of what Mr. McKenzie said, it's actually a pretty good idea, those headphones. We we have them at our church. It is expensive, though.
Bluetooth.
Yeah, and they would have to pick up off those microphones. So how, I don't know how old these microphones are or what your system is, but do they, is it even possible to get Bluetooth off of these?
Not of, not of these, these mics are four years old now, and they're supposed to be sound, well, the early, the early sound cancelling ones, they're not supposed to pick it up, but this is pretty heavily in here, and it's, you know, we're picking, we're still picking up.
So I I have a quick question is, do we, is that fifteen thousand enough to add on a kitchenette?
I think we.
We had quotes on, I don't I don't remember.
Because honestly, we started that, we went to that, then we went into just doing the floors, and then it kind of resulted.
It's expensive.
That's all I am saying.
Go ahead.
I think if you, if I remember right, you had was Ashball come out, Alec Ashball, to do, one of the suggestions was was right there, off of that door, had, you know, like a small area there that would go into another room, and wasn't it like in the twenties?
It's in the twenties, yeah, because you need a holding footer, siding, yeah, it would be a.
Thanks. So I had a follow up on that as well with the extension, instead of doing that, do you use Wi-Fi? I've seen somebody talk about Wi-Fi here for parties, you know. What would that cost? What, I mean.
You need internet.
Yeah, I mean, do we have internet access out here? I don't know.
I mean, we have a door, so we could put a router on that.
No, we could mount it up pretty much, to get internet service here to be a business class, and that's the, that's a source of it with me on business class, and I'm wanting to get it, but here, I think the minimum is seventy-nine for like a meg downloaded, I think it was over a hundred just for seven.
Wow.
It's not like you're residential, or you get a hundred and fifty bucks.
Can we go down here and say?
You guys can use my hotspot and just.
Exactly.
Can we just buy it for Mr. Lydus' house and bring on over today? You guys can use my hotspot from my house.
Sweet, great.
Oh, wow, so I mean, I was like, I heard people say about it, that might be a good idea, but.
I'll be honest with you, I'd love it, because you, if I, we don't, I can't check if it's ever happened, but if we have work sessions, it's easier to be able to get on the internet and do things, but a hundred bucks a month, man.
I mean, there, yes.
I was just gonna say, I mean, unless you were gonna say, I mean, if you guys want to do what you were saying, get some numbers on, or some ideas on sound ending panels, and maybe if you can dig up what you got quoted on an extra addition, and then we can just hold on that.
Yeah, we can hold on that one, can I discuss it? And then Mr. Shammy, I think you had something?
No, I didn't hear it.
Oh, okay, you looked at right.
Did you get any rest for any group, do you need any approaches?
Actually, I'm.
And then for, I know this is a different fund, I'm skipping down just one thing to Parks and Rec Board, I know we have one of their members here, and twenty-five hundred, I mean.
I had a discussion with Brandon, we, I don't know, that was a blind number I put.
Oh, okay, okay.
We don't know this, the first year we do, I know on the deck they got the Easter egg hunt.
Yeah.
It costs a lot, but you get die, but then I don't know what else they have planned for the year. And then I know there's a discussion about fireworks, so.
I think, yeah, I think we should do fireworks.
That's gonna be involved with the Parks and Rec Board, so you guys bear free to up that if you'd like.
What's I got on Becky there?
Do you wanna hear what we were talking about?
Oh, most definitely.
Would you just say?
Did I pick up?
No, would you just say?
Fireworks.
So probably, um, Veterans Day memorial, they walk, we, it wasn't, we want it to be bigger and more.
I welcome every year trust now.
And the Easter egg hunt, of course, and we want to do, for the fiftieth anniversary of the pool opening, we thought maybe on, maybe like the third weekend in June, that we would do like a food truck rally, have all the businesses downtown open, the food trucks and then the pool down there. I don't know how, like, if it would cost extra or if we would need.
Do you, do you pay the food trucks? I I don't know.
So the food.
No, okay, I've never done food truck rally.
You ask them to come, and they actually, sometimes they'll donate part of their proceeds back to you.
Oh.
So if we did that, we would probably put it back into the Parks and Rec funds, but those are our ideas so far.
So do you think that twenty-five hundred would cover, cover you guys?
Um, honestly, I think maybe five.
Five? I was thinking five. So with that, then my suggestion would be, Mr. Cook has brought this up tons of times about these fireworks, and I've heard him talk about it on Facebook for.
Yeah, that would be great.
Six years now, so.
Is that the fund that'll come out of?
Do we have a?
Yeah.
I don't think that, I don't, how much is insurance for fireworks, though?
That's, that's a question, but this, Mr. Cook?
I think, I think the fireworks, we were looking at, what, six to ten thousand dollars, including insurance.
Yeah, I mean, they'll go higher if you want, a couple hundred grand. But no, the, the ones that Flight did a couple years ago for our anniversary, it was a six thousand dollar package, and that included the insurance, and that was about a fifteen million show.
And it was good.
Yeah, it was, so sixty thousand is not, I mean, for what you got, I thought it was worth it.
So if we do.
Right, but if we can only do fireworks or all the other things, we're, we would rather.
Oh, oh, I would like to see it together.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be great.
I mean, do we have, we have a surplus.
A thousand dollars?
Yeah, I, I, that's what I'm about to ask Mrs. Harris, Miss Harris.
And whatever you take, I was gonna impact about it, it's that simple, the money's there, and it's just.
But this is a good thing to give back to the community.
Well, that's right.
I think it goes along with the, with your council, sorry to interrupt you, it goes along with your guys' mission, and it goes along with my mission. My mission for the past year is what to improve our parks. We have a park system here, and quite frankly, they're dated, that's why you got new playground equipment out here, two pieces, that's why Willow Park got new stuff, and this Parks and Rec Board is going to help facilitate in bringing our citizens out to these events. They're not gonna come if there's nothing to look at.
I don't wanna spend fifteen thousand dollars on fireworks when we.
No, you don't need to.
Spend fifteen thousand dollars on park equipment or an event or things that would, I would love to do that, too, but if we can do both, that would be great, but if we can't do both, we should think about.
When you're done, when you're done.
Mr. Larry.
What I was, um.
Then you.
Let him go, I just want, it's gone.
I'm sorry.
No, no.
Mr. Cook?
It's just gone.
There it goes.
Consequently, I think I showed Randy Enin's fireworks celebration.
I remember.
Christiansburg, they had a whole list of events that were during the day. My thinking was, we don't do it on the Fourth of July, when everybody else is doing it.
Exactly.
You know, we pick the, let's say if the Fourth is on a Monday, we pick the Saturday, when the business community is open, they're gonna gain from all of this, we do the food trucks, the whole nine yards.
But where does the money for the fireworks go now?
We, we have the general fund surplus.
I'm gonna have you write a check, Becky.
I actually, I still need to pay six thousand dollars for fireworks, even if we have other things that we need to take care of.
Like, I remember.
Oh.
Whatever.
Go ahead.
What I was gonna say was, is, and Randy, you'd said this to me, and I think you nailed it, my, just my opinion, I don't know, you know, we've, we've asked for tax increases in New Carolina, we've got them, police, you know, levies, things that nature, we're not rich by any means, but I think we've got enough that we can take a little drop.
Yep.
And say, this is what, we appreciate it, let's give.
Thank you, Matt.
Yeah, thank, yeah, and I like what you said, don't do it on the Fourth or weekend when another city's doing it, because we'll be competing, do it on a weekend, like you said, when nobody else has fireworks and everybody comes to New Carolina.
Here's a suggestion, we put money in, you guys put money in there, if the fire levy passes, great, we go through with the event, if it fails, it's over, and I was gonna joke, because there was a thank you event, and no one.
Well, you don't can't, remember that, that's not normal work session.
It's not it.
So we could afford to crank up Becky's budget to five thousand, and then you said for six thousand?
Our package was, they do, the minimum one that they did was two thousand, and that's, I'm sure, that's pretty weak.
Yeah, it's a one plus.
But six, six thousand, and I think everybody loves it.
So do you think we should just crank up, I'll get to you next message, but you think we can crank up to fifteen? Because we do have inside the actual parks budget, we do have a capital outlay for playground equipment, so, and I think we could crank Becky up and do the fireworks, and.
I, I would like to see it, I mean, he's been, been doing great.
And that gets us over the six thousand, like, let's say prices went up in the last few years, that gives us the cushion for cost of inflation and such things, so.
You got Judy back.
Yeah, and then Judy?
If you're talking the fireworks and stuff, I would definitely talk to the people with the fire department in Christiansburg.
Okay.
That's where I go every year, they have, for a little bird, their fireworks.
They're great.
Are a little dust around.
They're good.
Who is that, Christiansburg?
Yes.
I've heard of that.
And that works a Sunday after the Fourth of July.
Okay.
It is an all day thing, they call the fire department, they have water hole contests, they have raffles, they have a banquet.
They make an event out of it.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, doing something nice in New Carolina.
Do what?
Doing something nice in New Carolina.
Right. I'm sorry.
Fourth of July, that's coming here, it's on the Tuesday. We were either on the Saturday before, or do you think that we go to the Saturday after, they've been burnt out on fireworks, so?
We, you wanna do that in conjunction with the future? Do it in June?
Tomorrow.
I know that's not, you have to be able to, food trucks to come.
Are you sure?
Fourth of July weekend, yeah.
Well, if we're gonna, if we're gonna budget money for fireworks, we can iron out the date later.
Yeah, we can iron out in detail.
But I, I mean.
So fifteen thousand for Becky and for fireworks?
That's.
Not for Becky per se, but.
And that doesn't mean we have to use it all.
Yeah.
I mean, you're right, like I said, Randy, you're the first one I heard say it a little while.
So are you saying fifteen K and we for sure do fireworks, or?
Yeah, I mean, if we're gonna put, I think we'll do fifteen K, we do five thousand for you, keep saying you, but for the board, and then ten thousand for fireworks, I'm okay with that.
Oh, wait.
Yes.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I think there might be a way, this actually, Mike, this thing where they have to answer this question, if you're gonna do fundraisers and simply deliver your fire, but taking her events, is there a way that we can make that, and maybe, so maybe you can use the whole fifteen thousand for just, you know, into the park that's gonna be invested long term, would be possible to do a fundraiser through the food truck rally, or make them pay a permit to depart there, and utilize that fund to fund the fireworks show. So then, because I think what, you know, she's saying, long term, my dad's made on this equipment back in the fifties, I mean, this, that stuff is very dated, you know, out there, is there just, I think, is that, is that what you're saying?
I don't want you to give me ten thousand dollars for one time thing, but Parks and Rec is here for events, yes, but we need to be making long term additions. Twenty-five thousand dollars is great, but twenty-five thousand dollars got us two swings.
No, 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 no.
She said a swing?
No, no.
Okay, well.
No, those swings are not.
I don't, I don't want to be like, oh, Parks and Rec, we're gonna give you fifteen thousand, but we're gonna tell you what to spend it on.
Well, I think.
No, fireworks, I think that's fine, but I think that, I think that what Parks and Rec really should be about is doing things that are gonna be there for a long time, not just a one time.
What, I think, what would we put fireworks in it, I mean, we could move it to a different fund, and we still give her, I don't know, is that possible? Like, give her her five thousand?
You can put it.
Yeah, I mean, if we just transfer that ten thousand from fireworks.
Give her her five.
Give her her five.
And take our six or ten or whatever, did you guys all say that?
Yeah.
Should be.
Would that be?
And that'd be, I, I think you're honest about it, I, I think you should go for some fireworks, I, I truly do, and I think a lot of people.
This is very, and I guess that's just because I feel like fireworks are a great idea, but we're just now in the last, so I don't, I don't know that a lot of people would be like, yeah, it's a great idea, but if you spend ten thousand dollars on one day of things, then we could spend that rest basically, and I'm not sure.
Well, it's also an event that most people run out of, right? He's spent twenty thousand dollars on playground equipment, there's only a few people making it.
I, I know, but I feel like using it throughout the year is better than you doing ten thousand dollars at one time, and for everybody who's willing to participate, if we're, if we use figures, if we're.
Mr. Hall, Mr. Hall, one last, real fast, Dale had his hand up, I'm gonna give him the chance. Mr. Hall? I don't mean, I didn't mean to cut you off.
I, I just think, there's other parks, I was gonna say, park, people are getting through, I don't know, like, they like, like, lighting, and, 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 it looks like a safe place, and, well, then, you know, like, that would be, you know, I, I do think, these are long lasting things, if we could use that to help fight the heroin epidemic, you know, and then, and it's the stuff that goes on the park after the, I mean, I think it would be, it's a property owner, you know, obviously, my father has, you know, property here in town, that's, it's, it's a more safer use, I mean, anybody's ever seen any of that one park that I have, it's, 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 it's really daunting, like, that, it's, 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 it's.
Real fast, Becky, I'm gonna pop that guy down, because he raised his hand, sorry.
I, I.
Five boom, I don't know if I'm saying that one here, there's, there's still the possibility of the fireworks.
Council? Okay, Mr. Cook?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna let you in on a couple of secrets. Billy's Man Sonya.
Cut him off, stop him.
Mr. Cook. Mr. Cook, just wait one second, we're not, all right. Do we have something that can follow, Mr. Cobb? Make sure you get that, okay?
Do we have volume, or?
Oh, you want to volume, or?
I'm, I'm.
Are you sure, Carl?
I was gonna make the suggestion, we can only go to nine anyway.
Yeah, actually, that's what, we just had, just talked about that amongst ourselves, and once we finish this up, we're done.
Bless you.
Okay.
That's what I noticed about this.
Yeah, I did, too, and he, he went from, he went back to Spanish, and that really worried me. Sorry, go ahead, Mr. Cook, I apologize.
Okay. Queen, uh, Antonia's been having a Queen of Hearts drawing. They have drawn an untold amount of people and money for this thing.
Basically, it's about quarter, right?
Mr. Cobb and I have made some inroads with those people, and we're going to have quite a few more discussions with them before we bring this to, into the city. This thing, I think they had something like thirty-eight thousand people in that small town, the tail end drawing. That's a lot of money, that's a lot of people coming in here, eating, visiting the mainstream. I think this will possibly help out on some of our shortcomings, but there's a lot of work that has to be done before we institute this. Again, this might be a means of doing a lot of things for the parks, for the recreation, a lot of what they do, the funds that they generate from that drawing, help out a lot of the C three identities, they also have donated to their fire divisions, just like we missed out on the grants for the power costs, which were about five thousand dollars apiece. Those kind of things could be paid for with this Queen of Hearts drawing, we'd probably have to aim at something else, but this is something we're looking at to bring into the city, to see whether or not we can make it go.
Before we continue, I just want to ask, the question is, do we want fireworks? That's, that's, I guess, that's the question now. So, may I? Go ahead. So we still give Parks and Rec five thousand, and then put that ten thousand in there, right, for fireworks? Into a miscellaneous, maybe in just the parks fund, if you want, not special events, Parks and Rec. All right, it's not. If we don't.
You still wanna have separate money to put five thousand for fireworks?
Let me, I'm, let me finish. If, if we don't use the fireworks for that ten thousand, what, where is that gonna go?
Goes right back.
Right back into the general fund.
Goes right back into the revenue.
Okay, so it's gonna be separate no matter what, so the ten thousand and the five thousand's gonna be separate no matter what?
Yeah.
Okay, so now we're basically just trying to decide if we want to spend that money for fireworks or not.
Yes.
So is it worth for everybody to have a big public event to do something nice for the city, and? No? Just, no?
No, I would rather have that ten thousand dollars to put into the parks for a long term, but not.
Are you asking for ten thousand dollars for a year?
I'm saying, if you guys wanna say, I wanna give fifteen thousand, you give it all to parks for us to do what we wanna do with it, not give us five and then decide if you wanna do with ten thousand what you want.
I'll be honest with you, I think if you're not getting fireworks, I think the most that the parks boards get for the first year is about five or six thousand dollars, because you still got twenty-five thousand in capital.
That's what I was thinking.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, as a citizen, I, I don't think it's a good idea, but ten thousand dollars, I'm just gonna.
Oh, that's what I'm saying, not giving fireworks, you don't like it, you don't like it. Those kind of things could be paid for with this Queen of Hearts drawing. We'd probably have to aim for something else, but this is something we're looking at to bring into the city, to see whether or not we can make it go.
Before we continue, I just want to ask, the question is, do we want fireworks? That's, that's, I guess, that's the question now. So, may I? Go ahead. So, we still give Parks and Rec $5,000, and then put that $10,000 in there, right, for fireworks? Into miscellaneous, maybe in just the parks fund, if you want, not special events, Parks and Rec. All right, it's not. If we don't...
You still wanna have separate money to put $5,000 for fireworks?
Let me, I'm, let me finish. If, uh, if we don't use the fireworks for that $10,000, what, where is that gonna go?
Goes right back, goes right back into the general fund. Goes right back into the revenue.
Okay, so it's gonna be separate no matter what? So, the $10,000 and the $5,000 is gonna be separate no matter what?
Yeah.
Okay. So now, we're basically just trying to decide if we wanna spend that money for fireworks or not?
Yes.
So, is it worth for everybody to have a big public event, to do something nice for the city, and, no?
No.
No?
I would rather have that $10,000 to put into the parks for a long-term, or, not...
Are you asking for $10,000 for a year?
I'm saying, if you guys wanna say, I wanna give 15,000, you give it all to parks for us to do what we wanna do with it, not give us five and then decide if you wanna do with $10,000 what you want.
I'll be honest with you, I think if you're not getting fireworks, I think the most that the parks boards get for the first year is about $5,000 or $6,000. Because you still got $25,000 in capital.
That's up to us, what do you guys think?
Okay, well, I'm just saying, as a citizen, I, I don't think it's a good idea to put $10,000 aside, just to spend on fireworks.
Oh, that's what I'm saying, if you don't get fireworks, you don't have it. Yeah, five or six, if you don't get five.
Or else.
Sure. I agree with you. So, I'm gonna ask that question. Do we want fireworks? Like, like, $10,000, is that what we wanna invest for fireworks? Well, so, one question would be, like, what Mr. Hall was saying, how much would it be for us to get better lighting at our, at our parks?
That's a big que, that's a long question.
We don't even have signage at all for our parks, just to get minimal signage. I got a quote last year, and it's $2,000.
Who'd you get it for?
Minimal signage, with the cut off, it's a deal. No, we just get the signs.
No, no, I'm saying, I mean, it's always good to keep it as local as you can business, but, when you got big capital expenses, sometimes you have to go to the world's cheapest, for the benefit of your taxpayers. And there's a lot of sign names out there.
I'm just saying, like...
We allocate it for fireworks, and if we can come, if he can get his plan in play...
Well, that's a good idea.
And something like that, you know?
All right, Mr. Bridge, Mrs. Mackenzie? We're, just not, just getting back and forth between you guys about signs, or where to buy the signs, and...
Well, there's a component to this, and that's called our hourly employee, you know, so, I mean, we have to respect what their job responsibilities are, and we had the discussion with Ms. Mullen about this, you know, um, your bylaws are, and we're all very thorough in that, you know, so she's gotta look over them, so we don't know if those bylaws are in contradiction with our charter, or at all, for our ordinances, so those might be slashed and redone.
Yeah.
You know, when I was wanting the park board of it, was, you know, hell, you know, you use events like Easter egg toss, you know, you can sit in with me when I'm going through, look at what kind of playground equipment we have, you know, stuff like that, so, um, hold on, take it to the right tape.
Yeah, you go ahead.
Hey, you're on camera, you're on camera, bud.
So, um...
Randy, Mr. Bridge?
Yes.
Remember, you're on film.
What is that doing?
You've let out a bad word.
Fire.
Never mind, go ahead.
I did? Oh, sorry about that. It happens. Um, so, you know, um...
Okay, ready to start showing?
I don't know, in fact, I, I'm right there with it. Um, totally stone, the parks board there. Um, I think, 'cause it's the first year, we don't have anything to go off of, history-wise, it's, it's making it that much more difficult.
We can give you guys a closer shot last year, when we were researching at our own, if that would be helpful, but, I just don't wanna be the city's, then, unnecessary money on a one-time event.
All right, so, Mike actually had a great idea, if you wanna pitch that, or was it Aaron? It was Mike?
I just, my thought is, is, we put, we allocate $10,000 into a separate fund, and then, Mr. Cook, if he's looking at, Mr. Cook and whoever else was helping you, looking into that, uh, I forget what it was, yeah, looking into that, if, if that comes into play and works out, then you don't spend the $10,000, and that, and maybe we can ask the, remember the fire department did the boot for Colin Strong?
Yeah.
Maybe they can do that for fireworks.
And maybe accept donations into it, so that...
So, we could work on getting the donations, and go from there.
All right.
But it's there, if, you know...
So, is that, are we all in agreement that we want to invest in fireworks with the potential of asking for donations to bring down the cost?
That's...
I think that's a fair compromise. All right, and, Mr. Mayor?
So, the other flip side of this is, if you guys wanna let it separate, Colleen's gonna have to find out if we can even add a new line item.
Well, I, I think at that point, then we just put it in the Parks and Rec, and put a line item on it, or, put it in there for that, I mean, at that point, that's what we do, I think.
What do we do?
Just, just put it into the Parks and Rec, even though...
Wonder if we're to add special events now, just add more to that?
Yeah, and then, uh, just allot the $5,000 for Mrs. Mackenzie and her board, and then $10,000 for fireworks.
I don't think we can, that's gonna be hard to manage.
All right, then, maybe we put in miscellaneous.
All right, so, let me, tell us what you want us to do, then we'll have to get in well to do our research and our...
So, I think, it's $10,000 for fireworks, put it in the budget somewhere, right? Is that what I'm hearing?
Put it under miscellaneous?
Miscellaneous, and, or anywhere, and then put $5,000 for the Parks Board.
So, you want $5,000 specifically for parks, and $5,000 for fireworks?
$10,000 for fireworks. Because we don't know, we don't know if it's...
$5,000 for parks?
Yes.
Okay, Parks and Rec Board.
That's what I'm hearing, correct? I mean, on the line? Mm-hmm. All right.
Okay, well, we, what I'm telling you is, we need to get okay from the state authorities to add another line item. We may not be able to add a line item that says fireworks.
Well, what he was...
Go ahead.
What he was saying was, if you can, under parks, under Parks and Recs, you've got, well, no, it's still one line.
Well, I was talking about under parks itself, there's miscellaneous for $3,000.
We just added this on to the special events Parks and Rec Board, we're still gonna get verification from the order.
Okay.
Oh, so, additional adding a line?
So, I just wanted to know how, how you want it set up, so I can, we can figure it out once we get it.
Okay, well, that, that works.
$10,000 for fireworks, $5,000 for Parks and Rec, is this, that's a good with that?
No.
$5,000?
That's fine.
Okay. Okay. Question?
Do you not want the $5,000, is that what you're saying, or, I mean, you're not, you're not good with the fireworks, is that what I'm understanding?
No, I'm not good with the fireworks.
It's not even gonna be on the Parks and Rec side.
My understanding is, anything that the Parks and Recs would do, would have to be cleared through the city agents or anyways, so, because he...
I won't say clear, we're not using that word.
The $5,000 bothers me, it bothers me more that, that you would rather have a line item for $10,000 for fireworks, than give $10,000 to the parks, that bothers me.
But she was talking about, you know, you wanted the $10,000 instead of for fireworks, you wanted it for playground equipment, or swings, or, or whatever.
Yeah.
But we get, sometimes we get grants for that, and there's money already set in here for, the Capitol Light Outlet is $25,000, for whatever Mr. Bridge can get, donate, not donation, but, uh, grants for, and then whatever we have to match with, so that $25,000, third record, it's up...
No, no, I don't have, I wanna hear what you think about this.
Parks and Rec, essentially, you're working with $30,000, okay? You have $5,000 in that, that playground, but I got there, it's valued at, 36 or 40, I can't remember. That probably isn't that, it's not a...
Can we truly deny?
Yeah, I bet the camera, we didn't...
I'm calling Park, does it need some service?
We go, we get a brand, it's another year, it's 100% lighted.
We have to share, so we don't...
There's no guarantee for any of that.
Well, there's no guarantee.
But there's a guarantee to save $10,000 for fireworks, and not...
$10,000 for Parks and Rec.
Exactly.
Tendency of what kind of, say, quotes, for example, it's on new lighting.
You would rather have $10,000 set aside for fireworks, than $10,000 going to your parks, and that's the part that bothers me.
Well, we, we're just talking about this, and, thank you for bringing that to attention, and, Mr. Hall, thank you for the comment you made about the lights, you're not wrong. I mean, there is a major upkeep that needs to be done to our parks.
Well, if you wanna upgrade your parks, then you're gonna have to renew your CIP, because you, right now, you can't, lights are gonna cost more than $2,200.
Go ahead.
And once it's over $2,200, that's a capital expenditure expense. You guys do not have light upgrades in your household improvement projects. So, your light upgrade, if it is a valid idea, it's gonna have to wait till next year, before you guys can enter CIP.
Okay, I'm just trying to see what I'm saying.
Just trying to save, yeah.
Trying to talk.
Why does it have to be so difficult to make?
Because these, these are the laws of the state of Ohio that we have to go by. That's why people look at a government budget, they think it's so kind of rough, but there's so many laws that go into what we can and can't do.
So, we haven't done anything in the past 10, however, years to update anything in our parks, or, if we can do that?
I can't, you know, I can't answer since I've been here, so you can answer that.
Okay.
Okay, so, I actually have the floor, and I'm gonna, like, give a suggestion. I'm gonna ship it back to you. So, maybe we give Parks and Rec $10,000 instead of $5,000. Go ahead, and, I mean, if you use it, that means next year, and you guys do a good job, who knows, maybe you can get more, and we can, like, start to be a snowball effect. Because, you know, right now, we don't have this in the budget to do, like, all these major repairs, but maybe there's some smaller things, and I, I know it's asking a lot. I mean, last year, they had nothing, and now, we're talking about throwing $10,000 in there. Plus $10,000 for an event, a one-time event. But, you know, it, it's true, I mean, there's a lot that needs to be done, and if we have a group of motivated people willing to do it, is it worth $10,000 to me? Yes, it is, because I have three little kids, and it is super annoying when we go up there, and I have to check the area for anything and everything, and is that something we could fix within the year? Maybe not, but if we make it nicer, you know, more people are gonna come around, then maybe it's not going to be so attractive to the people who shouldn't be there in the first place. That, I mean, that's, that's my mindset, I, what do you guys think?
I fully agree with Mr. Riley. It, uh, we started, you know, upgrading our parks and stuff like that, and people will start seeing and coming out, and, uh, the drug dealers and whatever, I'll say miscellaneous stuff that goes on.
One of those right there, so it's kinda tough to...
Yeah.
New Carl Park is the one behind the, that's a mess.
I, I, I know, two years ago, yeah, I know.
Well, I mean, with the park lights, I mean, I, I get you, and I think it should be, definitely needs to be looked at, but I don't know if you guys would think that's gonna be 100%.
We, we know that, and, and I'm not, I'm not saying that, but I'm saying...
Carl Park needs some help.
But the effort's there.
It's starting.
But it shows the effort.
Yeah, let's go ahead and...
We don't have the money to try, that's what matters.
Well, that's not gonna happen, what I'm saying is, let's go ahead, i- i- if possible, you know, let's go through the budget, and if we do have some wiggle room, maybe we put that money back into Parks and Rec. You know, give yourselves a chance to actually make some, some sort of decent improvement that the eyes can see, and, then, you know, following to next year, we can be like, this is what we did with $10,000. I mean, so, this is our game plan for, for next year, and actually, you know, make something happen. So, we're definitely on board with the idea of fireworks, correct? I just wanna clear that. Because, I don't know, I'm not making sure, I don't...
With, with the agreement, we'll attempt to get funding out of it.
Yeah, with $10,000 for fireworks and $10,000 for parks, is what I'm hearing? Yes, that, that's what I think anyways. Okay. Ms. Harris, go ahead.
So, are you at special events?
Yeah, we're still...
Parks, $10,000, and fireworks, $5,000? Did you just flip that?
No, no, 10 and 10.
10 and 10?
10.
But, do we wanna see if we can cut other places to make up for that?
Well, this is just our first go-through, so we can do...
All right.
Would make a recommend, maybe any more cuts to your parks with the other stuff?
No, oh, no, 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 I'm not saying that, maybe down the road, other, other general fund expenses. Yeah, that's, that's what I was saying. Okay, so, we probably come back to that, then, I'm assuming, okay, when we reviewed it one, our last time, so, yeah, all right, there you go.
We talked about fireworks too, just to let you guys know, it was something that we were, um, wanting to do more of a fundraiser, so the city didn't have to pay for it, so, the $10,000 in the budget, might, might even have to use that for fireworks.
Right, and that's the goal.
And that's what we were saying up here, when you guys were talking, of the idea of using, um, Mr. Cook's idea of, you know, well, here's $10,000 with the...
Gentleman agreement that we're gonna try and get other funding.
Right.
And I guarantee you, if he, if you guys went to chief trustee, do the, do the boot. Yeah. I'm sure, I'm sure he'd be more than happy to help.
Yeah, oh, yeah, Ms. Harris, do you have anything?
He just said, did you catch that? I'm just trying to keep...
Yeah, parks is now up to $20,000.
He has our master copy of the book, so we are going to stop what we need and let this here...
No, no, no.
I don't think that was the agreement, Becky. All right, so...
Thank you.
10 and 10.
10 and 10.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank, thank you guys both for bringing some insight to all of that, because you're right. All right, so...
Thank you for helping out with park stuff.
It's now 9 o'clock, we made it to page nine.
Are we doing mine, or are we stopping?
We can get down to the real problems, it's...
One more page?
The building, so...
All right, wait, real fast, Mr. Bridge, Mr., I forgot to ask, any other comments? But, Mr. Lindsay said he had one, so, go ahead.
I had a question a half hour ago, and, the other subject.
All right, go ahead.
The, on the shelter house renovations, I know Mr. Riley has talked, and we've talked about it up here, in council, about building on out here. I think, I don't believe we need to build on a kitchen out here, I think we need that exit door, and I think the fire codes will say we need that exit door, because we need an entrance out, and an, in and out, for fire purposes, if nothing else.
Excuse me, ma'am, I'm, I'm sorry, but, we're, we're short on time here.
What, what I would, and we had also talked, uh, a year ago, I think it was, that, of putting like a kitchenette back here, of, you know, a countertop, a microwave, you know, maybe an outlet or joint, you know, if there's outlets back there, you know, for, maybe, maybe a coffee pot or something, or plug their hot plate, or their, what do you call them?
Crock pot.
Yeah, crock pots in, you know, I, I don't think we need to, because that, that expansion that you, that we have talked about before, if I remember correctly, that was something like $25,000 or $30,000.
Yeah, it was...
I, I would not want to spend that much on that, when I think we could go with a, with a kitchenette, in that back corner, which we had pretty extensive conversations on all of it, but then, you know, it just kinda went away, you know?
Right.
So, so I would, I would be opposed, I believe, of, of putting a room, an addition onto this building. I'd rather much see a kitchenette go in.
How much would that be?
I think, uh...
I think the kitchen...
About $5,000, $15, what?
Yeah, the kitchenette, I think, was around $10,000 or $15,000.
And we were running kitchenette, and we were running the working house, because our guys...
Yeah, you know, and you can put standard cabinets in, uh, standard, I mean, you may wanna go a little above standard on the countertop, so it would last. But then, you know, like Mr. Cook said, if we do that, we would need to have a, a deposit for cleaning.
Rein coverage of that.
Well, I meant above that, to, so if any of that equipment got damaged, you know, the countertop, the counters, the microwave, whatever we put in, it would cover that.
All right. I would set it up more buffet style, like a buffet line with a refrigerator and a long counter, and kinda block it off, and no, no cabinets.
Let me ask you this, opposing cabinets, I mean, and countertops, what about chef's table, aluminum table, would that hold up longer?
I was gonna say stainless steel, like, you screw down stainless steel?
Yeah, that would be almost too destructive.
Yeah. Oh, they're destructible, don't get me wrong.
They will, but will they last long, if we had, like, a tabletop? Because at that point in time, they would have, um, stored underneath, I'm assuming. Um, I know washroom and stuff, but I don't know how long they last, if I don't...
Thank you, Becky.
Thanks, Becky.
You don't want really storage if, if someone's just renting out the place, it's more stuff to clean. You wanna just basic, counter, wood? You can, you can even section it off if you want to, and then, you know, refrigerator, stove, and microwave.
I think, yeah, cool.
What's the cost on that, would you?
Well, we'll have to get it off.
Okay, I was like, Al, you got an idea? Nope, okay. All right, uh, so, any other comments, questions, concerns on this page? We're gonna finish, hope, go ahead.
Real quick, just, I, I mean, I think that's fair, I mean, I would like to see an extra room, but, I just, I mean, if you, if we can set it up nicely and tastefully, so it doesn't look tacky with cords and things all shifted and twisted, and, and give it a year or two, and see how it goes, before...
All right. The plumbing and everything, but I don't think it can be in that corner next to the restrooms, it has to be over here, I'm, I'm just speculating, but...
Comments, questions, we got one more page? All right. Lands and buildings?
Lands and buildings, this is our city building, so, so, gas, electric, uh, that's, um, city building things, anything else, what does plus out of gas, water, anything that goes in the...
Is that a...
Is it?
No, it is in the, um, where we work on the cars.
City building garage.
In the city garage.
Yeah, and then, that also, city building recent there, uh, rented still 1870, copy release is what we have now, um, I'll be honest with you, uh, we were gonna knock the copy release down, but we will be looking at getting a new copier for the office, because the one we had is on its last leg, and we are in a maintenance contract with it, and they're up there five months every month, month and a half fixing things. So, we need, you need to look into securing a new copy for the city building. Uh, all the other stuff, maintenance of facilities, that goes into wear and tear of the city building, and also the garage, our hut down there's pretty old, it's aging, uh, even though that we are renting out the city building, it is a commercial lease, so some of the things we are responsible to fix, we just can't call them and have them come do that. So, it would be very hard for us to find much to cut from this expenditure, expenditure page, but we're always open for discussion.
Comments, questions? Mr. Riley?
Mr. Mayor?
And then, Mr. Cook?
Mr. Bridge and Ms. Harris, um, we have some copies up there that we're also getting a great deal on, as far as generally use and purpose, aren't we? It's saving us money.
Do you mind if I say? Ms. Harris and her husband, Grace, has donated two copiers to the city. Uh, we use one of the city building that we just do normal copies on, and then we have the other one that we actually pay for. And what that did is it allowed us to use less of the ones that we have to pay for, I think we get how many copies? 20, 2,000 a month, or any, we pay for anything over $2,000. So, Ms. Harris bought that backup, and then, well, a lot of the times, we'll use that for, every month, month and a half fixing things. Uh, so we need, we need to look into securing a new copier for the city building. Uh, all the other stuff, um, maintenance of facilities, that goes into wear and tear of the city building and also the garage. Our hut down there is pretty old, it's aging. Even though that we are renting out the city building, it is a commercial lease, so some of the things we are responsible to fix, we just can't call them and have them come and do that. So, it would be very hard for us to find much to cut from this expenditure, expenditure page, but we're always open for discussion.
Comments, questions? Ms. Riley?
Mr. Mayor.
And then, Mr. Cook.
Mr. Bridge and Ms. Harris, um, we have some copies up there that we're also getting a great deal on as far as general use and purpose, aren't we? It's saving us money.
Do you mind if I say? Ms. Harris and her husband, Grace, has donated two copiers to the city. We use one of the city building that we just do normal copies on and then we have the other one that we actually paid for. And what that did is it allowed us to use less of the ones that we have to pay for. I think we get how many copies? 22,000 a month or anything we pay for anything over 2,000. So, Ms. Harris bought that back up and will, a lot of the times, we'll use that for like a single page or two to print out, so we don't eat into our 22, $2,000 allowance. But what I, I'll be honest with you, you know, as administrator, I constantly look for ways to save money, even if it is pennies, you know, same thing, add up. What I'd like to see is us get a colored copy, because right now, we have, that copy we have is just black and white. So, right now, we have individual printers in just about every office. That if someone needs to print colors, they can do that. I don't like that. I don't like that at all. I wouldn't like it. Maybe it's a weird one to mean having Colleen had individual printers in our room and then everyone else has to go through that main copier. That way, it's going to allow me to track who's printing and the cost associated with it.
Well, the reason why I had brought that, because I remember you mentioned that before and I, I know some of the newer class members didn't know that, just showing you guys go that extra mile and save money, but I have to be honest, I did not know you did not have a colored copier on the main. That means...
I assumed we did.
Right.
These days, like...
My copier on my, my, for my knee jack.
That's what I was about to ask, like...
And, um, that's just how...
Yeah, you shouldn't do that.
We, we really think that we can reduce our overall cost if we just have a central color location printing for the normal hourly stuff. I will retain my printer because sometimes I like to print a lot of things that are trying to find privilege and I am not sending that to the server, the printer that's up to the server. I'm going to send it directly to my office. And it's going to print right there because, I'll be honest with you, sometimes I print, they'll test it and I walk away and I...
All right, Mr. Cook?
I believe we have some buildings that are in pretty bad shape. Have we got any money set aside for either repairs or taking these buildings down?
This is just lands and buildings for our city building and hut. So, when you say pretty bad shape, were you talking about like our, our street hut and all that?
I'm talking about the, well, that building and the one up behind the old waterworks, uh, the old city building. I understand the west wall, that's got to come down.
All that would be taken out of the water.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, what about, what about the substation?
Substation, we come out of, actually, police, it comes out of there. It is a police facility. Now, that's something we can look into because I agree with you. Um, so I've already had a discussion with Chief Deputy Russell to either relocate our share of substation to the cemetery or bring them actually into the city building itself. If we do that and we close the substation and then, um, the fire department to use that first, we'll have storage. Uh, eventually, the substation will have...
What about putting an extra amount of money in, at least a little bit each year in regards to Madison Street School? You know, we, we toss this thing around for God knows how many years. If we put a few bucks in every year, it might have been a little bit smaller boat to bite when it comes down. And there is some movement underway right now for some help in taking that down.
Did you say there is movement? Did you say there is movement for help to get it? There is?
I'm sorry. We'll meet you in the gentleman hall. We'll meet you at the, uh, hotel. I was supposed to be in the lobby.
Well, you all have my theory on Madison Street School, so I'll let county decide that. We added the way the shit was done, it's going out to your reality. Here's my thing with that. I'll be honest with you with that. It's a tough call. I mean, it is. I mean, it's the elephant in the room. I think everyone here has their best interest to do that, calling things down, but it's not going to be cheap, you know? Especially, I would love to have the opportunity to probably go and try and get that same deal we had a couple of years ago. Mr. Allen, we're getting blocked, that comes, I'll throw that down. I don't know if it's going to come again, to be honest with you. I think we have a one-shot deal. But let me speak with some people at county. I do agree, I think there should be something in there. So, we need to set a goal to do that with 10-year dollar road, 7-year dollar road, there is basically that need to be, but that is an economic challenge. I cannot tell you how many times we go through and call people to buy it and go to D-Box and buy the other one. I don't like it. There's, there's the best interest of tearing that down. Having that six acres, the acre, I think it's about four acres on the other side of it. And then one of our city employees bought another block there that's probably about four or five acres. You can get a small house, you know, and, you know, New Carlisle's need to expand their taxes. Right now, you're letting, not building new houses, building those one-greets. On your own, you got to private build after, it's different like that area is crap. We can't go back. We have to look at ways to expand our taxes for that lot. We're going, you know, we don't have lands and we don't have land. You know, um, we're going to get it, it's hard to get to the employers. We have to look at other ways to fix it. We need vacant, blank. We don't have a, we have any. You know, that's part of the thinking, how it really, really is. I've actually talked to some lady, actually, a lot of people, you know, so, um, she's talking here, we're just talking about it. I'd love to see teams of our citizens, I mean, to get smaller houses, smaller apartments there. Turn it into something better.
I have two questions. So, for one, are we doing lands and buildings and miscellaneous or are we just going to focus on lands?
No, you do both.
Okay.
And you have to answer as opposed to that.
All right, so I'll, I'll make my questions quick. What was it, communication services? It jumped 10,000. Not saying we need to cut it, just want to know why it jumped 10,000? I can see where we spent 22 one year, then 14 and 15, we backed down.
That 22,000, 10,000, we need to save the rest.
Okay.
Can we start with that?
Yeah, yeah, I'm totally cool with that. Uh, and you said the copier lease, we, we need that 3,000 to see where it's at, almost 1,000, 1,600 and 1,900, so... Okay, which I, which I assumed we'd crank that up was my guess.
I'm sorry.
That's going to crank that up, about that 3,000? Okay, good. Um, I told you, because I had on that. Mr. Allen?
I'm just putting you back on Mr. Cook's topic again one more time, if you don't mind, real quick. I know you brought up Madison School, you guys are having some sort of meeting on whatever, I don't, you know, we'll find out soon and soon. Depending on what you guys get out of that, we could maybe visit that subject again. But when you mentioned other buildings, the hut, I hate that hut.